Call the meeting to order. July 19th, 2022, Town Council meeting here in the Harvey Room. This is also going to be on Zoom. The phone number for Zoom is 301-715-8592. And the ID is number 882-9504-7360. Roll call, please.
Counsel Honan.
Here.
Counsel Fusillo.
Here.
Counsel Munson.
Here.
Counsel Belcher.
Here.
Counsel DiMarco.
Here.
Counsel Flacco.
Here.
Counsel Aiello.
Here.
Vice President Roggerio.
Here.
President Luteri.
Here. I'd like to please ask to stand for the pledge led by Counsel DiMarco. Thank you, Counsel President.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like everybody to please stay standing. Since our last meeting, we've lost a couple of people. John Ead, a man who led a remarkable life. He was inducted into his high school Hall of Fame for multiple sports. He proudly served in the U.S. Army in Vietnam, received injuries that would alter his life forever. He earned a Purple Heart, a Bronze Star, and various other medals. In 1978, he was the Director of National Commission on Neighborhoods under President Carter. He was a fellow at Harvard University School of Government. In the mid-'90s, he was Commissioner of Inspection Services for the city of Boston. He was on boards in Winthrop. He was also a registered architect and a former Golden Gloves boxing champ. He was truly a remarkable man. Also this last week, the town lost Thomas Bailey, son of Beth and Tom Bailey. His mom Beth works for the, with the public schools. Tom was an incredibly kind, sweet, and thoughtful young man, and he will be immensely missed by so many. Now, hearts go out to the Bailey and the Wayland family. I would like to ask for a moment of silence. Minutes from the June 23rd meeting have been circulated. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Counsel Belcher, second by Counsel DiMarco. Any discussion, admissions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Abstentions, none. General information. We have two citations to present tonight. First is to our own Rose Mazzacelli, and I will read it. "Be it known that the Winthrop Town Council hereby offers its congratulations to Rose Mazzacelli in recognition of over 20 years of service with the town of Winthrop, nine serving as the VSO, receiving the prestigious Deborah Sampson Award Women's Veteran Network, Governor's Advisory Committee Patriots Award, Governor's Citation for Dedicated Service to Our Vets, Winthrop Chamber of Commerce Patriot Award, Mass. Veteran Service Officer Association, and so many more. We wish you nothing but good luck in the next phase of your career, given this 19th day of July at Winthrop, Massachusetts, signed by Jim Luteri, Council President, Rich Fusillo, Barbara Flacco, John Munson, Joe Aiello, Hannah Belcher, Steve Roggerio, Vice President, Tracy Honan, and Rob DiMarco." Congratulations, Joe.
It was, it's my honor, it was my honor to serve here in Winthrop, to serve the veterans. I tell Denise that, I tell other people that I miss, I miss being here, I really do, because I live here, so I was fully vested. But it was time for a change, give somebody another opportunity to do great things for our veterans, and I'm sure he will, because he's a great guy, and we go way back, way, way back. And I'm looking forward to just coming to the events in Winthrop and being a spectator rather than running everything, so. I appreciate the opportunity you gave me nine years ago when I took the VSO job, and I still work for Park Direct though, so I can't get out of that. And I take care of the training for all the kids, so, for CPR first aid. So, thank you again, thank you for this.
Thank you.
You can't have stuck with us.
Yes, and it's okay.
Also here tonight, we have a young man, Jack Wallace, former Winthrop High School baseball and golf star, who helped lead the Eastern Connecticut State University baseball team to the Division III National Championship team. His dad, Mark Wally, is also here with us tonight, who has been a fixture down at the rink for more years than I'm sure he would care to talk about. So I do offer this citation, "Be it known that the town of Winthrop and the Winthrop Town Council hereby offers its congratulations to Jack Wallace, 2022 Eastern Connecticut State University baseball Division III national champions. On behalf of the residents of the town of Winthrop and sports fans of all ages and gender, it is quite an honor not only to congratulate you on your national title, but for all you have chosen to accomplish in your chosen sport. We wish you nothing but good fortune in your future endeavors, given this 19th day of July, 2022 at Winthrop, Massachusetts, Jim Luteri, Council President, Rich Fusillo, Barbara Flacco, John Munson, Joe Aiello, Hannah Belcher, Vice President Steve Roggerio, Tracy Honan, and Robert DiMarco." Congratulations, Jeff.
I just want to say thank you, thank my family. I appreciate everything that the town's done for me over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Let's maybe take a couple of minutes, and we can have a picture with Rose and a picture with Jack, and maybe a five-minute recess, and then get started. You want us to?
Everyone's here.
Go that way, and I'll have Rob go.
...a moderate risk of uprooting in the next year, which if it fell on my home could cause severe damage to my house, me and my family. It would cause a big insurance liability for the town because the town is now aware of these issues. If they fail to act on them, we can go after you for subrogation. The idea has been floated in previous meetings by Diana Mines and other people at the Winter Tree Group that a bump out could be put around the treaty. I've talked with Mr. Calla and he said that would cost over $200,000 to do what they are suggesting, whereas taking down the tree, fixing the sidewalk, and all that would only cost about $25,000 to $35,000. It's also creating a big strain on parking in my neighborhood because we would lose parking spots if that happened. And two of our neighbors just created their homes into multi-families from single families. It's damaging my retaining wall and my front stairs and now on level will be pushing up the sidewalk causing me to have unsafe entrances in my home. We've had three separate contractors up to my home who have all told us it would be thousands of dollars to fix the wall and there's no way they could do it without with the tree there. It's a danger to the public who has to go out into the street to get around it in the street frequently. And as someone who has a disabled, blind parent, this would be a big problem for her if she was ever to come over and visit. It is a problem for her whenever she does visit. The curb is pushed over four ounces out inches out into the street. I personally have damaged a tire and run from hitting it while parking in front of my house and my neighbor bent the frame of her car as well. This tree is a lawsuit waiting to happen. Now that you're aware of the risks it poses to the structures, vehicle, and the public, if you don't remove it, you can be held liable for any and all damages that occurs. You know this tree is a danger to my home, my neighbors, my family, and the public. The reports state that. I'm a mother trying to keep her children who are playing in her yard safe. I'm a daughter trying to help a disabled mother have better access to the world. I'm a daughter-in-law trying to help make my home safe from my elderly mother along with us. Protecting these people means everything to me and removing this tree is one way to make sure that those people are protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Hi. You hear me?
Yes.
I'm on the tree committee. I have been a certified arborist. I've examined that tree and I see no outstanding danger to that tree or anything around it. Yes, it's pushing up the sidewalks, but there are hundreds of trees in town that are doing the same thing. And there are hundreds of trees just as large as that and that bloom over properties and cars and streets. Most of them will not fall and there is no indication that this tree is any more likely to fall and cause an accident and liability to the town than any other tree. There is of course a non-zero danger to anything we do. Drive a car or have a house, a car's crashed, houses burst into flames. But I think these dangers are mostly exaggerated.
Thank you. Denise?
Kurt Malark.
Kurt.
You have time you, Kurt?
Yep, I got it. Kurt Malark, R.C. Two. I've been following this now for quite some time and just looking through state law and our tree ordinance, our current tree ordinance now too. The tree warden was able to make a decision from the first public hearing that happened and was continued, continued to another meeting. Then another meeting I watched, a decision by the tree warden, not the tree commission, was allowed to happen. The tree commission is just an advisory and the tree warden is actually the one who should have made the determination. So now it's been brought to the council after quite some time to have the council basically ask the tree warden to make a decision, but council is going to make that determination, actually. I think it is important to consider that a citizen has been complaining about this tree who does enjoy trees and does not want to eliminate trees per se across town. And this is one tree that is affecting their own property that the town has been aware of for quite some time. I feel that this has not been justly reviewed and responded to in a kind of manner, which has put the homeowner in kind of a bad situation. And from previous meetings where there was some accusations made because it's a town employee, I felt that was very wrong for people to start stating. This is a town citizen who's asking for help for their property with a tree that is causing issues in front of their house. I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt.
Not sure, Wendy, did you want to speak? Mike DeLuiseau?
Mike?
Mike, I'm mute.
Here we go. Good evening. Mike DeLuiseau, Precinct 5. My company is speaking solely as a resident homeowner. In May of 2021, my wife and I approached the town's tree warden about removing the tree in front of our home at 190 Somerset Ave. While it's a nice-looking tree and enjoyed the shade it provides, it has unfortunately uprooted its space and needs to come down. It is causing damage to the wall around our yard, pushing the curvy collection street. It's a contract with both power lines feeding the street and the feet to our home. It makes the sidewalk impassable to any mobility device and lift-ups and pass drivers. There's an overall hassle. Additionally, despite being trimmed on at least two occasions, there are still numerous dead branches overhanging both the street and our yard that might shelter the plant. It has already caused damage to at least two vehicles, damage to our property, and caused at least one resident of the area to be injured. This issue was first placed in the tree committee's agenda on June 7, 2021, continued to the meetings since September 20, 2021, and June 27, 2022. It now comes before you 408 days after this process began. In that time, I provided numerous pieces of case law and determinations from the ADA and the federal level. To date, these have been ignored. Additionally, the town's new tree ordinance should not apply to this matter since it began prior to its pregnant and passage. According to the ADA information line, when the town reconstructed Somerset Ave in 2011 after a water main project and replaced the sidewalks along the street stretching from Johnson Ave to Pleasant Street, the sidewalk should have been brought into compliance at that time and it was not, instead leaving a mere 16-inch wide path to pass this tree. There's been suggestions people can simply cross the street, however, there is no accessible route to do so, whether it be all the way back to Pleasant Street or Johnson Ave. Quite frankly, there's suggestion that someone should be unable to use a public sidewalk with a disability that is 25 feet from the handicap ramp is discriminatory at best. There's been suggested that a bump out could be installed to solve ADA issues. This proposal will be detrimental in the neighborhood, does not solve the issue of damage to my property or the hazards posed by the tree, and will be cost prohibitive. The town has secured reports from three different arborists. These reports confirmed the ADA violation, confirmed the damage to my property, and while one stated tree appears to be healthy, the other two were determined to be a hazard, one calling for its immediate removal, one putting it at moderate risk of failure within a year, and going on to say that if it were failed, it would cause, quote, "significant damage up to and including death." I am a resident and a homeowner. I'm a guy working two jobs to provide for my family and secure future for my children. I'm asking for their safety, the safety of my neighbors, and the safety of the public. Please order this tree to be removed. Don't look for the damage to get worse. I ask you to please review the arborist reports, case law, and photos I have submitted to this council via email, especially the photo of a resident trying to pass the tree with a walker to get back to the car after leaving my home and visiting with my mother, as well as the case law against the town of Winthrop due to damage caused by a tree. The date's back to 1920. Lastly, I ask you, please, take any and all necessary steps to ensure that no resident and no homeowner ever have to suffer through such a drawn-out process in the future when faced with similar issue. There is no reason to go on any 14 months after it began. I thank you all for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you, Mike.
Carol Holmeyer?
Carol?
Hi. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for your time. I just wanted to make the observation that-
Carol, I'm sorry, can you just state your name and precinct for the record?
Carol Holmeyer, Precinct 1.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make the observation that if the town do make the motion to remove this tree, it would appear that the town is setting a precedent for all other trees that may be in a similar situation across the town. If there were any issues that came along, legal would come along, look at the case, and set a standard for the town for all other trees. So this is something that really needs to be considered high, very much, also in terms of budgeting. If the town were to become, have to become in compliance, not necessarily because they're grandfathered in, to some degree is my understanding, unless you're upgrading everything, what would the budget look like to bring the entire town to that standard? Other, as other commentators have mentioned, in terms of the ADA, I think a legal review of the ADA was requested to see if this tree truly is not ADA compliant in terms of what they require. Also, the street itself isn't ADA compliant. There isn't a grant going out on either side of the street, making that also ADA compliant. In terms of the walls, these are old walls. I've gone around town, I've looked all over. Very similar walls are cracking everywhere. This is the nature of age and weathering on structures. And I also agree that the dangers are greatly exaggerated. I'd like to know who requested the three arborists to evaluate the tree? I think that information was requested in letter but never received. Was it the homeowner that requested the arborist or was it the town that requested the arborist? That information would be helpful. Are you able to share that now or?
I am not. I do not have it.
Okay.
I will get back to you on that, though.
I think that is very important information so that we have a true measure of objectivity and accountability here for our due diligence. Those are my comments and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol.
That is it. No more.
Correspondence, we have none, but I would like to revert back for one second to general information and recommendations. We did have general information that the town manager would like to share.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, we have in the audience tonight Phil Ronan. Phil is here because he has recently been hired to be our new VSO, our Veterans Service Officer for the town of Winthrop. So we had three candidates apply. We conducted interviews and it quickly became apparent that Phil was the best candidate out of all of them. His desire for the job, his devotion to Winthrop, and his overall wanting to help the veterans came through loud and clear. So I was happy to make that offer and Phil accepted. In fact, he wasn't supposed to start until next week, but he really was coming home and wanted to start Monday. So he's been there for a few days already working and he's already done some time with Row, so I want to thank him for coming on board and- Phil, do you want to say anything or?
I'd just like to tell everybody that I'm sincerely humbled and honored to be able to serve my town and my fellow veterans. I'll do everything I can in my power to help adjudicate their cases. I'll fight as hard as I can, but I will tell you, it's like following Vince Lombardi. But thank you very, very much. And I hope that I exceed your expectations.
Thank you.
Congratulations and thank you, well deserved and-
No pressure.
This is the town manager's pick, but I think the council as a whole is very happy with the pick and we thank you for your service and of course, you do have big shoes to fill, so.
He'll be fine. He'll be fine.
Correspondence, Denise?
I have a few correspondents on opposition of the tree removal and people that do want the tree moved on 190 Somerset.
Thank you. Committee reports. Rules and ordinances, Vice President Ruggiero.
Thank you, Council President. The Rules and Ordnances Committee met last Thursday night to discuss a myriad of motions that have been forwarded to the town council from the Transportation Safety Advisory Committee, or TSAC as we call it. A lot of, well, all of these were physically located in Precinct 3, so Councilor Hannah Belcher was able to join us as well to opine from a precinct counselor position. We passed seven of the nine motions that came to committee out of, that came to our committee out of committee with positive recommendation. I will ask that the clerk take a look at these motions in post-public hearings where necessary before we vote on them, just to make sure that we are in compliance with our ordinances and state law when we're doing any ordinance update changes. But generally speaking, I can run through them quickly. There was a motion to eliminate parking on a section of Terrace Avenue. This was due to the width of the street, fire truck not being able to get by. So again, we've seen these before as a council, but you know, one up on Terrace Ave. There was a follow-up motion passed out of the Rules and Ordnances Committee to request that TSAC look into the traffic direction of Terrace Ave to make sure that our ordinance corresponds to the practice, whether or not that should be a one-way street or, you know, I think it's being used as a one-way street, but it might not actually be coded as a one-way street. So we're actually sending another motion back to TSAC requesting that they take a look at that. There were also some parking limitations that came to us on Shirley Street, one in between Perkins Street and Irwin Street, and another one on Shirley Street from Perkins Street to Tewksbury Street. So changing the, again, just sort of updating our ordinances to align with a lot of the parking practices on that street in and of itself. We talked about updating the ordinances to take care of some interesting traffic patterns that occur at the intersection of, the high tide intersection as we know it. But again, just making sure that folks aren't able to park at the corners of that intersection where they, where you're not supposed to. Again, codifying it, but a lot of this doesn't exist in our ordinances because they're old. But there's another motion that came to us that would provide the DPW Director to maintain and install stop signs wherever is required in the manual on uniform traffic control devices, independent of council review. So this would allow the DPW Director to put up a stop sign where a stop sign needs to be placed per this traffic manual, instead of coming to the council, having it go to TSAC, back to the council for a simple stop sign, putting it where it should be. The committee felt that that was okay. There was, and then the last, there was some parking restrictions on Crystal Cove Avenue that we talked about and we passed that with a positive recommendation. Again, narrow streets, a lot of different intersections in that area, so with safety in mind and with, you know, larger vehicles on the roads these days, Amazon trucks, UPS trucks, FedEx trucks, again, just updating what is allowed and what our ordinance says to what the current safety standards are. And then the committee held one of these motions in subcommittee for a little further investigation. This is changing the direction of traffic on Cottage Ave in between two cross streets up on the hill. That there, the committee felt that we needed a little bit more information and a little bit more feedback from folks in the area to make a determination. So that one we held in committee, but the other ones that I just spoke about did pass out of committee. I circulated this to the council earlier today, but you know, obviously, it's a lot easier to look at these on a map, so I'd encourage you to, between now and the next time this is on our agenda, to take a look at Google Maps and maybe take a drive, update yourselves, just to make sure we all know what we're voting on, so. That is our committee report, unless Council Belcher or anyone else in the committee would like to speak, but.
I thought that was a fabulous report.
Just missed any.
Council Belcher.
Thank you. Just to reassure a lot of the residents in Precinct 3, like Council Ruggiero said, a lot of these are just codifying what's in practice now. I did get a lot of feedback on the Terrace Ave parking situation, so I'm going to make sure I get up there and take a look at what's in place. And the Cottage Ave directional situation is like about one-third of the street that's currently a two-way, so that's the area that's specifically being discussed. So if people have feedback, they can reach out to myself or Council Ruggiero.
Council Flackatt?
Thank you, Council President. It seems to me that the way these parking limitations are awarded, that they're from Perkins Street or Tewksbury Street to Irwin Street, which encompasses all the businesses on that side of the street. What's happened to these businesses during this business day, like for instance, the hardware store, where people can't park there?
So again, I think that motion that you're talking about in particular is just codifying the current practice, so I'm not-
But people already park there.
Yeah, yeah, so I, Council Belcher, do you?
It's a time restriction, it's not no parking. So it's, I believe, 30-minute limited.
It was only 30 minutes. It seemed like this is the whole business day.
Well, it's a 30-minute parking from 8:00 to 6:00.
Oh, I see, yes.
So it's not a limit in the parking for the business, it's just limited.
Correct. So that's why-
So the restaurant is the only one that's going to be hit with that.
So again, this is already what's in place, it's just codifying. That's my understanding of the situation, but I think, you know, we are going to post public hearings for this.
We are going to have public hearings on each of these items, separate public hearings at our next council meeting. There's been public hearings before at the committee level, but we have a responsibility to have a public hearing at the council level and we will do that at the next meeting.
Perhaps we should notify High Tides Restaurant.
I think during the TSAC deliberations, any resident or property that is affected by this, they were sent a postcard and they were part of these TSAC deliberations. These are, everything that I just talked about has been with TSAC for quite some time now. That's why we have all of these coming to us at once. Usually, they're kind of given to us as they come, but they've been held for a while, so.
All right, Council Ayalo.
Just a note to add to this and maybe it's some separate actions, both within ordinances and then just in operations. In a lot of the places we're discussing about this and other places around town, it's not clear when there's MBTA bus stops that people should not park there at all. This town, like other towns still do, used to paint the MBTA bus stop curves yellow to be indicated indicative of the fact that a bus is going to be there, it's going to pull over. That's not only good for the bus, good for traffic, good for pedestrians who can align from the light from the curb, but it also helps with the turning movements of the bus as well. So I would, I want to make sure that in any of the discussions of this set of things, we look at MBTA bus stops, make sure they're protected and can provide the service, and then operationally get back to painting curves at bus stops so that people know they shouldn't park there and customers, the bus system, I can get it off safely.
Thank you, Council Ayalo.
Sorry, Council President, there's one more motion that I forgot to mention. It's in the vicinity of Dahl Playground on Veterans Road where the new nursing, nursery-
Nursery school.
Nursery, nursery, nursery school is, and there's a little bit more activity in that area, so TSAC proactively looked at this area to make some safety recommendations in that part of the neighborhood as well. This recommendation would make sure that there's no parking between the emergency access road, sort of on that Lewis Lake next to Dahl Playground, and also would limit time-restrict parking in front of the playground so that folks can go and run their errands and then at the end of the day, it would turn back over to the resident for overnight parking. So just one more there that, again, was circulated and we should all take a look at, so.
And again, we'll have public hearings on these, so the council as well as the public can weigh in on their options, their thoughts before we take a vote on these. Thank you. Town managers' report.
PowerPoint. Yes, I just got to pull up the PowerPoint. I'll start off with the, all right, presentation. While that's being loaded, I will announce, we've been working hard on some of the other positions in town and, yes, first one, then just start the presentation. Thank you. We have made an offer and an accepted offer for the treasure collector position. So Brendan Curry will be starting on, I believe, August 22nd, that Monday after the 15th. He's currently the treasure collector in the hot, so he's leaving that position to come here to Winthrop, so we're happy to have him on board and he's starting then. So we're still working on the assistant, but we were able to fill that position, so he accepted yesterday, so we're excited to, you know, get moving forward, so.
Very good. Glad to hear.
All right, just at the beginning slideshow there. Up top.
Smallish.
And then from the beginning. There you go.
Oops.
There you go. And then just, yeah, we'll make it up there.
It's like the first round.
Yeah.
(laughter)
I'll load it up.
Okay.
All right. You just hit the arrow to go to the next one. There you go. High tech. All right. So fiscal year '22 recap, this last year, we invoiced $10,478,350 in water and sewer charges. We saw a 1.1% decrease in usage over the prior year, which that combined with lean collection accounted for water and sewer revenue shortfall of $197,748. Of the money billed out, we collected 99.3% of the amount billed in FY '22. So as establishing the FY '23 water rate, we took the FY '23 budget, obviously subtracted out the FY '22 budget, what we had last year. As you can see, the decreases and increases, personnel, we had an increase of $36,000 approximately. Health insurance, workman's comp pension assessment, $29,000. Purchase service and supplies, $21,700. Our MWRA and DEP assessments actually went down slightly, so that was a decrease of $17,759. Property insurance, another one up by $5,142. A slight decrease in debt principal and interest payments on the Center Business District, $181 that decreased. Debt principal and interest on other projects went up by $10,934. This year, we had money that was approved by the council, FY '23 water budget of unanticipated capital projects of $220,000, so that's in there. And then indirect costs dropped $65,475. So as you can see on the right there, the increase in the rate, you know, the sense up and down there gets us to a total rate increase of 56 cents for the current fiscal year. Next slide, please. So that's, as I said, the FY '23 rate increase will be 56 cents over the FY '22. So our new combined water and sewer rate for FY '23 will be $24.84. This is a 2.3% increase over last year's rate. The FY '22 rate was $24.28. This is an impact to the rate payer, so if you're out wondering what's, you know, what's this mean to me? So we've given some breakdown here, a family of one, you know, living solo, you would probably see an increase based on the standard, the American Water Works Association suggests that you use 94 gallons per day per person. So based on that, family of one would see an increase of about $25.68.
Over a course of a year?
Over a course of a year, yeah. Yep. Family of two would see $51.37, again, annual over the year. And a family of four would see an increase of about $102.73. Obviously, usage varies, but that's a ballpark, so. And again, that's an annual cost, thank you. So moving forward, we will use, to adjust for the deficit in the budget, we will use the water and sewer free cash to fund the, any unanticipated capital projects that commit in FY '23, and that will allow us to account for the revenue shortfall in '22. Free cash is for the water and sewer fund, has not been certified yet for FY '23, but we anticipate it'll be approximately $1.8 million. It was $1.6 last year. Over the next year, I plan to propose a free cash policy for the water and sewer fund to use these funds for smaller emergency capital projects and to lessen the impact on the water sewer rates, you know, as the approved SRF loans that we approved at the last meeting and others, you know, start to hit the rolls. And then lastly, this proposed policy that I want to bring forward to the council will also put a percentage of water and sewer free cash into the water sewer capital stabilization fund, which currently has approximately $150,000 in.
So when you talk about free cash, you just, that should be fiscal '22, correct? Not fiscal '23? Hasn't been certified yet?
Correct, hasn't been certified in fiscal '22, we get to use it in fiscal '23. Sorry, yeah, thank you. And that's all I have. I'll certainly answer any questions, but that will go out, the first bills go out in August, so we wanted to make sure we presented that and get that rate set for the fiscal year, so. sure we presented that and get that rate set for the fiscal year, so. Um, more to follow on that, and obviously, um, Dick, who works upstairs in the office, is a year, you know, your auditor. Couldn't be here tonight because he was out of town, but he offered to come in if you have any further questions. He can sort of deep dive into the numbers if you want. He can come to a future council meeting, um, maybe even on August second if you want him to come in for the next one. Um, other town manager updates, uh, we talked about the, um, hires, but, uh, a quick watering update. Um, I was sort of copied in late on that email thread that was going around about the Center Business District and the watering of the planting beds. Um, luckily, thankfully, that process was already in place. Uh, Steve and I had already met the prior week earlier, and we already had a process in place. We're using some of the children, uh, kids that work for Massport, uh, they're watering the flowers during the week every morning, and then when they're not available, Steve's in filling with his guys. So they're getting watered every day of the week, um, as of last week. Um, we, I know Council Iello had asked last time about different sites for the Public Safety Building. I did do a little digging into that and found out that there was an assessment done of numerous sites around town. Um, so I'm going to try to get that report together and then get back to you on that information on that. And I've also reached out to Kessel and Booth to talk about not only the site that they're working on, but maybe even around the corner a little bit. So, um, we're working on some other alternate sites there. Um, with, uh, we have a flag policy that we brought forward from Wakefield that we were looking to tweak. Um, Council Vice President Righiro and I had talked about that briefly, so we're working on a draft of that. I'll have that probably, a draft of it anyway, ready for sometime in August, um, to get to in front of the council so we can discuss that and see if they want to make any tweaks or changes, and see if it's something the council's interested in. Um, I had a nice meeting with, uh, thanks to Councilor, um, Righiro. We had a nice meeting with CASA, uh, last week, met with the board there. Uh, they're a great group. So, um, coming up later in the conversation, we got a new business, talk about opera funding and whatnot. They were looking for some additional funding, uh, for this year. We were able to with some grants and whatnot, give them, I think, up to fifty thousand last fiscal year. So they're looking to see if the town will support with some additional funding, so that's something I'd like to discuss at that point. Um, and I will be, uh, vacation time off. I will be away from, um, July thirtieth through August sixth. Uh, there'll be a dual coverage on that week. Um, Police Chief Delante will be covering the first part of it, and we'll be able to cover the council meeting on Tuesday night. Um, and then he's going out of town briefly, so, um, Police Chief, uh, sorry, Fire Chief Wiley will fill in for the remainder of the week. I checked with both of them, and they're available, so I will have coverage for both the week. I'll only be up in Maine, still available via cell phone and whatnot, but I will be out of state, so I have an acting town manager in place. And then I won't be available for the me first meeting in August, but the second meeting in August sixteenth, um, I talked about School Dude. Um, it's a software program that the schools currently use. Um, so it's a facilities management software. Um, I've reached out to them about getting some pricely, uh, pricing. Right now, I want to announce their name change. I'm not sure I love it, but they've went from School Dude to Brightly, so now they're called Brightly. Um, they're going to be coming in to give a presentation for what a facilities needs assessment, uh, which is a lot of what Council Iello was talking about, doing an assessment of all our buildings. What I did is I put together a list of all the buildings that we have in town, school in town, square footages, and then they're going to put together a pricing package based on that, and can kind of come in and talk about what that package will look like and what it will include. Um, I did this in a prior town, includes roughly a twenty-five-year capital plan, and it'll break down everything that needs to happen. Obviously, you know, that's never out of the perfect world. We won't be able to afford all of it, but we'll be able to pick and choose after that and create our capital plan off of it. It's a very in-depth report, and the nice thing is it allows us to also incorporate into our facilities department and start doing proactive maintenance rather than reactive maintenance. So these are all, you know, good things, and they'll come in and give a presentation. Obviously, there'll be a funding component to it if we want to move forward with it, but, you know, that'll be the pricing that we mentioned at that time as well. And then I'm open to questions from the council.
Council Iello.
Thanks for the update. So, three quick things all interrelated.
Sure.
The program that you've been talking about, you've been discussing in terms of mostly facilities, i.e. buildings.
Yep.
But I'm assuming that program also can extend to our need to create a database on roads, sidewalks, water and sewer conditions, et cetera. Is that correct?
Not that. That would be something different. I've actually talked to Director Keller about that, and we're working on getting another pricing plan to get that water plan you want and some other things. Some of it will be. It'll do a lot of our equipment. Um, and then he's already got a plan for the road, uh, an assessment done of the roads, so we'll look to incorporate both the water and the roads. But that's coming in a separate, um, presentation.
Yeah, and I think it's important to, um, accelerate that to the extent we can, because here we are with sort of higher rates. We've had the terrible audit that we had to sort of think about.
Right.
And, uh, many people in my precinct are saying, what are you doing about it? Well, this is something we can be doing about it, so having, understanding what the condition of the assets are going to be, and having a long-term plan to develop with that and tying it into funding and rates structure over time, I think that's important work. So I would encourage you to accelerate that as much as you can.
We are. Yep.
And then, um, just generally, sort of just larger scale, um, I'm glad to get back to me on a number of things, and you are incredibly responsive, so I don't want to take the next thing as a criticism at all. I think it would be helpful to, at least me, I don't know how the other councilors think about this, to be a bit more formal in terms of having a document about items that have been raised at the council, by the council, by the public, and sort of what we're doing about it and where the disposition is. A lot of these came, um, it was like the dead zone before you got here. I just want to be honest. I've got, from every meeting, I've got about six things that are stolen responded to by my fellow council members. Simple database, nothing fancy, to say, we're working on this, or this isn't a committee, or this is going to be happening in a study, et cetera, would be helpful. And then the other thing is that, and I've said this before, we live for, the people at this table, for these council meetings. The average person on the street just wants government to work, and they also want to know what we're up to. It would be nice to not have to wait till Friday night or Monday morning to figure out what we're going to be talking about, so people can figure out what they can arrange their schedules. If you could do a two-meeting look ahead, it's not a formal agenda.
Yep.
So you can choose to have things not take place. You explain, we did not put this on the agenda because we weren't ready because, but it would be a great benefit, I think, to voters, taxpayers in this town, which is everybody that lives here, um, to understand sort of what's coming up, so they could then tune in if they want to, so we can improve citizen participation. So if you could-
Yep.
Get two documents going like that. I don't know. I mean, I'm not the one that gives you orders around here, but, um, I think it would be hu- hu- helpful tools for us and for the public.
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Munson.
On one of those topics that I would love to see, like a little bullet point on a regular basis, just to see where we're going on the progress of the old middle school site, if there was any progress on, can you give us an update on anything, any kind of, uh, on the survey, for example?
Yeah, I'm still collecting the plans. I finally tracked them down. Uh, they're actually really close to me in the office next door. Somebody had had them in there and not in the building department. So we're gonna, uh, we'll get those out to the engineer to get a price on that, um, and then we'll, you know, move forward with that. But that's where we stand right now. We're still waiting to get the survey done.
All right. Thanks.
Council Flockhart.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, since you're moving on the Public Safety Building back to the original report, or the latest report-
Yep.
With the multiple, uh, sites considered, I presume that you're, you've gone back to the idea of a combined public safety building, and you're not looking at just redoing a fire department more quickly?
Uh, that, both options are on the table, so I would say both options are being looked at. Um, you know, there was, you know, obviously, people have concerns about having it all in one location. Some people don't, but then there's flooding concerns, so, I mean, they're all being looked at, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. My committee looked at that-
Right.
-a year ago, and perhaps we should talk about it.
Absolutely. Sure.
All right. And just, I'll, I'll ask through the town manager to the DPW director. I know there was a comment before tonight's meeting on, um, some crosswalk painting on Trident. Can you just explain, uh, the type of paint used and, and-
Absolutely. I'd see, um, we just finished, uh, our, our round of Main Street corridor paintings. It's the same paint that we've been using for years. It's, it's an epoxy-based, uh, spray out of a machine. Uh, it's high visibility, you know, after the paint's applied, it's, um, like a crystal powder that gets dropped into the wet paint, and it dries rapidly. It does tend to be, uh, a little more slippery right when it's applied than, uh, you know, a week or so after, after it wears a little bit. Uh, that said, any painted surface will always be more slippery than dry pavement. That's the nature of, of, of paint. Um, crosswalks, centralized, I don't know if anybody's ever tried to stop on a, on a, on a crosswalk, you, you know, when it's wet, you will, you will slide a bit. That's, that's a painted surface.
And also, uh, just the last thing, and then we can move on, on, um, I was happy to see, I guess, the, the cement, the concrete workers, the sidewalk workers have left Winthrop. Uh, so Pleasant Street is, is done. The center basically is done, and now they're working on Pauline Street to resurface. Uh, can you just talk a little bit about closures and how long that will take?
Sure. Yeah, so they started the, uh, the milling work on Pauline Street today. Uh, they were able to complete from, uh, on Pauline Street between Waldemire and Pleasant. Um, they expect, uh, Pauline Street to be completed probably midday on Thursday. It'll be a full day tomorrow, and then some wrap-up on, on Thursday. Um, and with, then they'll, they'll mobilize onto Pleasant Street and, and start the, uh, the milling up there between Woodside and Somerset. Uh, Pleasant Street will go a little bit faster than Pauline. I suspect all the milling will be done, um, probably by, by Tuesday of next week, uh, possibly Wednesday, and then, uh, final surfacing, asphalt surfacing will come in right after that. Um, they were hopeful that they could have all of the asphalt work done by the end of the week, next week. Um, gonna be a little bit more, uh, realistic and build a little contingency into that and say it's probably going to spill into the early part of the following week after next, but, um, they're gonna strive for Friday of next week to be done with the Pleasant Street and Pauline.
And striping in the center?
Striping in the center, uh, the, the final striping plan has been, uh, given to the, uh, to the contractor. He's working on getting that scheduled. Um, he's also got his materials on-site for the drainage work in the rink parking lot, uh, the structures and the piping there as well. Uh, I don't have a definitive date. Uh, I will, I will certainly call him tomorrow and see if he can firm up a date on the striping, uh, and the, uh, start of the drainage work as well.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you, town manager. School Department report. The school committee met a week ago Monday, a week ago yesterday, Ju-, uh, July eleventh, I believe it was, at the high school. Uh, it was a rather brief, uh, agenda. The, uh, the main conversation revolved around the superintendent is recommending, um, a, a title change for the curriculum coordinator to assistant superintendent, uh, variety of reasons for it. Um, and she laid out a, a very good presentation, and it is something that will be discussed further throughout the summer and, and may be, uh, decided by the end of the summer or into the beginning of the new school year. Um, and that was it for the school committee report. We will go on to old business. There is a zone flood resiliency language change that was received. We have a recommendation from the planning board. Uh, this was on the agenda last week. Um, I will be asking for just a motion to, to move this language change and approve it.
Motion?
Motion by Council Munson, second by Council Iello. Any discussion, amendments, deletions? Seeing none, um, uh, ask for a roll call vote, please.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Fucillo?
Yes.
Council Munson?
Yes.
Council Belcher?
Yes.
Council DiMarco?
Yes.
Council Flockhart?
Yes.
Council Iello?
Yes.
Vice President Righiro?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, the second item under old business is Trash Enterprise Fund, Trash Abatement, Trash Enforcement, which, um, I just want to remind everyone, we had made a, um, a promise, so to speak, that as of September first, we were going to have some answers on four families, as well as I would like to see some, um, finalization of enforcement as, in, in terms of one barrel, in terms of, uh, bags, uh, for the overage and such. So I would like to, um, have this sent to Finance and, um, and possibly request that Finance ask, um, someone from the Trash Enterprise Fund, Wendy, to, um, to come to your meeting to, so you guys can discuss this and hopefully bring something back to us, uh, no later than the second meeting in August. So at very least, we can have an answer for the people who we have given a extension to, and, um, you know, in, in a time certain, at that point where we could vote on the enforcement, proper enforcement in bags, and, and give the residents enough time to understand any potential changes, uh, in that. So I would ask for that to go to Finance.
Motion for it?
Nope.
So, Council President?
Yes, Council Honan.
I thought that this had been, this issue had been sent to the Joint Committee of Finance and Rules and Ordinances.
Yeah, I was thinking about that. That's fine. If we want to just keep it with the Joint Committee, that's fine. Yep. So we could have it with the Joint Committee of Rules and Ordinances and Finance.
Yeah, and I, I, that, that works for me, and, uh, Council Fucillo and I will touch base after this. We'll get a meeting posted between now and our next meeting.
That's fine. That's good.
If I could ask a quick question?
Yes.
Director Keller and I started talking about this today, about, you know, the one barrel and the bags and the costs and whatnot. I guess what I, the question I need answered, or we'll, we'll need answered, um, and whether it's the council or the finance committee, is what's the end game? Is it to fully fund the Trash Enterprise Fund? Is it to still fund partial with the general fund? So I guess, because those numbers obviously will dictate how much we charge per bag and, you know, whatever plans we put together, so.
I think, I, well, can't speak for all the committees, but I think the thought going in was that this is just an extension of what we've been doing. This is not a, um, pay-as-you-throw type system. That's not what we have enacted. Um, the town still subsidizes the trash, and, and we expect that to continue for a short time anyway, for the foreseeable future.
Okay.
Um, the council, you know, has the ability to, to alter that.
Right.
Um, but I think now we, you know, I think the town has done a, a very good job overall in, in rolling this out, and I think now it's been a year. Um, we're actually, I think, three years into the contract, but it's been a year, two years into the contract, and, um, we need to finalize, um, enforcement of the, of the contract. So I think that's where we want to go. I think we've given ample time, and I think now it's time to, you know, make some final decisions. But no, our, uh, my impression is not that we go to a pay-as-you-throw system right now.
Okay. So I just wanted, because we're going to run some numbers with Wendy and put some things together so I can present to Finance, so I wanted to be ready. Thank you.
Um, the CBD, maintenance of plants and watering, I just wanted to make sure the town manager did cover that, and we thank the town manager for that. And I know that we've also seen more work done with the new trees that were planted and memory down there that they, uh, they are being, um, really looked after quite well. Discussion of public ways, I just want to keep this on the agenda, especially in the Court Road area and throughout the town. We have a lot. We want to try to compile a, a list to kind of see click fix type thing, to just see, uh, where we stand on this, what we need for potential improvements or safety, uh, and just to take a look to make sure we have access. Um, you know, you hear a, a bunch of different things throughout the town, but I just want to make sure that we have a good understanding of all the public ways and access to the water if they need it. Um, and we'll keep that on the agenda.
Excuse me, Council President?
Yes.
Just for, um, the sake of the public and myself too, um, public way, what are we, what exactly are we talking? We're talking about all these little path-
We're talking about access points to different, yeah. So between two streets, there might be a public way going from one street to the other, not the private ways that were also another discussion.
Another separate, separate discussion.
Another separate discussion, but more, you know, on Court Road, I think there's four or five that go to the, down to the water, say.
Right. And there's, you know, one up, up the hill, one up in the highlands.
Exactly, exactly. Some of them, um, you know, have issues with walkways. Uh, some of them might have concrete issues. Some of them might want to be purchased by some of the abutting owners. So I think they're just something that we need to, if we're going to own them and take responsibility for them, we want to make sure that they're-
Okay. Yeah.
Possible. Got it. All right. TSAC regulation, we, um, regulation requests, uh, Vice President Righiro talked about this in, uh, committee reports, and we will be having this again on the agenda at the next meeting. We will have public hearings on each of the items, and then we will continue this on old business if we choose to vote in it at that time. New business, sale of land on Farnbar Ave. There was, there were three requests, I think, back in, in April, early April. Um, one was on Veterans Road, which I think we, we've moved to the town manager, and there were two others on Farnbar. And I know Council Iello had some questions on this, as, as well as a couple other councilors, and, um, you know, we, we've had ample time to take a look at this, and, you know, I, I would like to see if there's a motion to move this to the town manager for his discretion and to look into, you know, we still, he still has to look into getting cost analysis and such.
Appraisal, yeah.
Appraisals on the property and such, but, um, as we did with Veterans Road, I just wanted to know what the desire is on the council. Uh, Council Belcher?
Thank you. I, I would like to see a motion to move this on to the town manager for these residents, just so we can give them some progress and not have it just kind of-
So there's a motion that the town council allow the town manager to proceed with the necessary actions to begin the procedure of sale of land for forty-four through fifty and fifty-eight through sixty Farnbar Ave, take any other action relative thereto. There's a second by Councilor DiMarco, discussion. Vice President Righiro.
Yeah, just a question, point of clarification.
Yes.
Um, so this is, when that- So this is, whenever there is a possible sale of land, the final vote needs to come back through the Town Council.
Yes.
This is just something to get the discussion started, correct? And this is not sort of binding by any means, but it's just more of the green light to the town administration to go ahead and start having these discussions with the residents? Am I understanding that correctly?
No, my impression is, as we did with Veterans Road, that this is giving the Town Manager the purview to do his job and to look at what's in the best interest of the town and to make sure everything's settled and to get appraisals on the property and then to sell the property. So, yeah, so make sure, yes, you.
Well, yeah, that's right.
This would not be coming back to the council.
Okay.
Council Aiello, Council Flakat.
So I, particularly when you're dealing with something along the ocean, I'm not necessarily opposed to the transfer, but I think a lot of thought and a lot of care needs to be taken in evaluating whether or not we want to do this. There are certainly threats of the ocean, there's threats of climate change, there's public access along the way, there's the overall stability of the hill, which the community has, you know, we've got the water tank, et cetera, has a set of interest in. I don't know if Chapter 91 sort of kicks in, which is a public way, state regulatory environment. There was in the offer letter, an indication to take responsibility for the public access way. What does that mean in terms of a contract? Is the contract going to be enforceable, is it responsible for maintenance? There's a thousand little issues that can either make this a successful transaction, a transaction that 10 years from now we regret. I worry about not giving it a public forum that this council gives it by having it a discussion essentially between the Town Manager, no disrespect, and the abutters. I think that there is a broader public interest here, and I think it's better served by at least having one big discussion of the facts from Tony when he does his full research to come back and tell us what his recommendation is, rather than it stay at the Town Manager's office.
Council Flakat?
Having recently christened this area with my blood, and although I will not be going down there anymore, I am concerned that we keep this open as a public way. Now, I understand that this is supposed to be separate from the land. I just want to make sure that the public has access.
All right, and I'll just add to the motion that, you know, I think this is, this is why we hired the Town Manager to do his job. I don't want to do his job for him. I don't want to micromanage him. Totally understand Councilor Aiello's thoughts, and this has been on the table, so to speak, for several months now, but I have the utmost confidence in the Town Manager to perform his duties and to watch out for the citizens of the town. So I will be voting for this motion.
Any other questions? Councilor Piscillo, motion?
Specifically, I have received correspondence regarding this in person. It was, you might be able to answer the question. It was something about a watershed behind that area. I'm not sure exactly what was being spoken of. There was that, and then I also, for myself, I was wondering what the use of the land was going to be.
Sure, yeah. So I'm not aware of any watershed at all. It's basically invasive species have taken over that hillside and caused erosion to happen. Both the Water Tower, Riff Wrap, and the neighbor, I think it's 32 Fawn Bar, both have fortifications on both sides. So if we were to get storm surge, so today in nor'easter, the water comes up to the seawall, if we're to get a significant storm, it will come over and those, basically our plot lands and the hill, run the risk of being breached. So that's where we're looking to basically allow a public throughway still, so that the 10-foot throughway, which is on the plot lines, we love that pathway. It's used by many citizens and absolutely support that. But basically to build a boulder structure up, you know, a few feet to basically fortify the base of the hill, which is currently owned by the town, was inherited through the Lynn Railroad back in the 40s, and so 80 years later, nothing has been done with it. So we're looking to make this, you know, something like you see in Newport right now, something that's enjoyable for the public as well as us.
Do you mind if? Councilman Munson?
Thank you, Council President. In this same line of thought, I'm just concerned that, let's say, you guys are lovers of public ways, but in the next sale to another, you know, sudden, some guy just is a miserable human and just can't stand people being in his space, can he, will he have the ability to shut it down? Or is there, as Councilor Aiello said, a long-lasting agreement that this will always be a throughway where people will always be able to enjoy walking around the tower?
Yeah, we're not asking for that property.
Wouldn't that not ask him? So it's just shy of that throughway?
It still has that 10-foot pathway called access right now.
Council Honan?
In regards to the boulder structure that you mentioned, have you talked to engineers? Is that where you got the idea for that particular structure?
We've spoken with some others, yeah, some folks for what could you do? And they said that is the highest resistance for a storm surge versus a cement block structure. And it also, I think, is probably the most.
And do you have those reports from the structural engineers?
We've just, it's a discussion at this point. We want to see if this was.
And again, if we were so to give this to Town Manager, it doesn't mean it is going to be so. It's giving him the ability to go and ask all these questions and do all this work. Vice President Ruggiero?
And that's my question, just procedurally here. So folks who are concerned about this, councils who have questions about this, if we were to pass this motion tonight, our best avenue for advocacy for, against, with, anything in between, is to go contact the Town Manager's office, because that's the office that will be doing the negotiating and the vetting and sort of asking all these questions that we're asking now, correct?
Councilman Munson?
Just last question. I know we're going to be most likely passing it forward to the Town Manager, but so will this actually be like plateaued, where, you know, where you can actually start using the land, or is it will all be sloped?
Ideally, we would probably go up a little bit with a single toe and then fortifying the hill behind that, so that there is some usable space. Currently, the entire hillside is a jungle and not usable.
Right, it is a jungle, it's impassable. So will there be, will the vegetation most likely be removed and replaced with controlled?
No, I'd like to put natural native species there.
All right, seeing no further discussion, there's a motion by Councilor Belcher, there's a second by Councilor DiMarco. Last for a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Honan?
Yes.
Councilor Piscillo?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Belcher?
Yes.
Councilor DiMarco?
Yes.
Councilor Flakat?
Yes.
Council Aiello?
No.
Vice President Ruggiero?
Yes.
President Leteri?
Yes.
Motion is passed. Discussion of parklets, I know a couple of years back, a former Town Manager threw a grant, had accessed, I think, four or five, I'm not 100% sure of the number. I think we got $105,000 grant or $110,000 grant for the purchase of four or five parklets. To this day, I know that there's one at the, in front of the library, I'm not 100% sure, which I will ask the DPW director in one second on the location of that. My purpose in starting this is to take a look at where they are and to request that the one at the library be taken away. First of all, I think part of the motion, part of the agreement with the, is that they're not supposed to be on grass, and I understand through COVID and everything, it provided a, you know, a welcome relief, I guess, since they couldn't access the library. But we have a beautiful town lawn there, and I would like to see it back to where it was. But I would ask the DPW director for locations of the parklets.
Sure, yes, there's five of them, one of them obviously in Town Hall, there's one at the senior center parking lot, there's one up at the Crest Ave parking lot, and there's two down the public landing.
Do I have any discussion on this? People have thoughts on this? Councilor DiMarco?
You know, I think this was something that at the height of COVID was getting a lot of attention. Like, for example, I went up to Agunkwit, and, you know, the whole point of the parklets were to take up the parking spots along the road. Like, people made, you know, like, all the parking spaces were parklets, and people were eating, yeah, like the North End, and people were eating there. Now, I think in Winthrop, it ended up being, you know, we couldn't put them all along Crest Ave because, and Director Callahan, correct me if I'm wrong, it was a hazard because the streets are so narrow, you know what I mean? So I actually liked the one on Crest Ave that's in the parking lot right now, because a lot of people go out there and have coffee on a regular basis. So I mean, I think that's one that is doing good. I think, you know, I don't think I have any problem with the two down the landing. I think people are using those as well. But it might be, it might be a good idea to take the one off Town Hall right now. I mean, I don't think it serves any purpose at this point. Yeah.
And I do think the former Town Manager's idea was to try to, you know, have a stimulus to local businesses and the economy, and, you know, it's tough timing in a lot of ways because we were basically in the beginning stages of redoing the whole center, which kind of, you know, gave it no chance to have any access down there. And, you know, Shirley Street is rather narrow. You know, I applaud the effort, but I will ask Councilor Flakat.
Yeah, I disagree, thank you, Council President. I disagree with you on the library one. I really like that it's there. It has been quite well used, and it isn't like there are benches in that area, so.
No, I totally agree, and while I agree to the fact that I think that would be nice to have benches in the area, I just don't like that structure on the town green. I think it's not visually attractive, and, you know, I think it takes up a lot of space that three or four benches could take up and look nice around the outskirts of the walkway. I will, Town Manager?
Yeah, I just, I did speak with the library director about, you know, taking it out. He said they're not really using it for anything they do, so he's fine with it. But he did say that he's looking to, with the library trustees, to put a picnic table on the side of the library, so it's not in the grass area, so it'll kind of solve your problem with having some additional seating, and maybe we'd like to put some benches in the future, so.
Sounds good.
Vice President Ruggiero?
Yeah, just, I want to say that I can't speak for all of the parklets, but I know that the one on Crest Ave is very, very frequently used. There's an event at Crest Ave Park this Saturday, and I expect that it will be full. There are no tables in the Crest Ave Park, that's the only table where someone can actually sit down and have a meal. Whether it's COVID or not, people like to eat outside, so I would just advocate for keeping that one there. But how, and just a question, how easy are these things to pick up and move?
With a machine, right?
Yeah, I feel like.
You need a loader, they come apart, they separate, so it's two halves. It's, you know, they get some weight to them.
Yeah.
They're a little bit fragile because they're so heavy, some of the components. You know, you don't really want to move them too much.
Okay.
But they can be moved.
Yeah, I was just thinking, for special events, it would be nice to have these, you know, someday when we have an event down Winthrop Center where there's a critical mass of people, you know, it's a good sort of additional seating thing in the street if we're blocking enough streets to have an event. I think it's a great asset, but obviously I want to make sure that they're used.
The storage of them is another issue, so if they don't, if they're not deployed, we don't have a good place to store them safely. They're going to end up somewhere where they're probably going to, it'd be better well-served.
In the public.
Deployed than, than sitting in a.
Somewhere else.
Somewhere else.
We also talked about potentially looking at the, you know, like Crest Ave and the other areas where we have one, maybe there's room for another one, so.
Sure.
We'll look into that and maybe down the landing too, so we'll try to find a home for it.
And maybe other parks.
Right, exactly. Thank you. I'm not, I'm just.
Yeah, that's all right, yeah.
Thank you. I would like to make the following appointments, or actually reappointments, at the Town Council Vice President, I'd like to make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the Town Council vote to reappoint the following members to the following committees for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2025. Carla Murphy, Winthrop Committee on Disabilities, Liz Corella and Tom Curry for the Historical Commission, Alyssa Santoro, Parks Committee, Betty Peabody and Janice Palmeroy, Beautification Committee, Suzanne Matucci-Gallo, Commission on Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations, and Cameron Nguyen. No, I'm sorry, and that was it for that. For those, for those motions, that was it.
Is there one more?
No, the other one is a.
Tom DeDarian.
Yeah, Town Council vote to approve the appointment of Alyssa True on the Cultural Council for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2025. And did you have one?
Tom DeDarian.
Oh, for that tree. Yes. And to appoint Tom DeDarian on the tree committee.
Okay, so those names and, those names have been submitted by Council President Leteri to be appointed to those corresponding committees. Those are all reappointments. Do I hear a second on?
I'll second, Vice President.
Is there any discussion on the motion of those reappointments? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilor Honan?
Yes.
Councilor Piscillo?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Belcher?
Yes.
Councilor DiMarco?
Yes.
Councilor Flakat?
Yes.
Council Aiello?
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero?
Yes.
President Leteri?
Yes, thank you.
President Leteri?
Thank you. I will move on the agenda. Thank you, Vice President. Discussion on 190 Somerset Tree Removal. So this has been around for quite a while, and it is back on the table. This is not a public hearing, it's discussion amongst the council. It is new business, it does not have to be voted on tonight. We can ask questions amongst ourselves, we could ask questions to the Town Manager. And I'll start it with, start it with Councilor DiMarco.
Thank you. I actually, I'm hoping you guys give me a little leeway. I got a bunch of questions. First off, I won't, I don't want to hear any criticism of the homeowner at all. I think that's very important. The first thing I want to bring up is when Lucy during public comment spoke about a bump out, which would protect the tree and move it out, she said that she was told it was $200,000. Is that accurate?
It is accurate. You have both underground utilities that would have to be moved, you'd be moving drain instructions, curbing sidewalk. That said, that is, you know, again, you've got to bid these projects, so could come in slightly less than that, it could come in above that.
Okay.
I also don't know that it's feasible in the sense that the width of the road. So that was a price that was given to move all the utilities, the sidewalk. It was never suggested that it would, it would function properly, especially with snow buildup.
Sure.
You know?
Okay.
I mean, it's a narrow road to begin with.
Yep, no, I'm familiar with it. I grew up on Satch Street. The other question I have is the tree ordinance that we passed, that Vice President Ruggiero passed, is that applicable even if this, if this thing was brought to attention 408 days ago, as the Delwee so said? Is that applicable to this? Does, do you know, Tony, or?
I can double check. My gut says no, because it was opened up before he passed the tree ordinance, so it would be in there.
So the tree ordinance probably wouldn't be enforced on this?
Right, yeah.
Okay. I mean, honestly, with the property, you know, speaking of, when they speak about precedent, when they speak about, you know, the potential of death, when they speak about pushing up the sidewalk, I don't think those arguments really hold water. I don't think, you know, if we were talking about pushing up the sidewalk, we'd probably have to remove every tree in town. I mean, walk down any street, and that's, that's the case. The question to me is, is it damaging their property? And, and that's the number one question, because if it was my house, my question would be, is it damaging my property? And if I can't take the tree down, are you going to compensate me to fix my property? That's the number one question here, in my opinion, okay? So, you know, if I had it my way, I don't want to take down the tree. But Town Manager, are we, do we have any plan in place to compensate them for damage to their property?
There's no plan that I have in place, no.
Yeah?
But if I could, regardless of the, you know, everything you said is all valid points, but really what this boils down. but really what this boils down to is the, you know, accessibility, um, you know, of the sidewalk. A couple of things have happened. Um, I reached out to Mark Lesser as a compliance officer at the AAB, the Architectural Access Board, which is the state's, you know, ADA compliance. You know, two things. One, are the arguments that were made earlier, um, aren't true. I mean, you can't say there's a sidewalk across the street that means it because it's not reasonable to expect somebody to go down to the closest crosswalk, which is almost two tenths of a mile away crossover, and then come back up the street. So that doesn't work. Um, it's not about, it's handicap people in the house. It has to do with anybody that's in a wheelchair or needs that straight sidewalk needs to be able to use it. Secondly, because we did the work in 2011 to redo the sidewalks, um, before direct to Calis time here, at that point, we should have taken the tree down. You know, you're required to by law, if it exceeds a certain threshold, you should have taken the tree down at that point. That didn't happen. They just said, oh, nobody's complaining about it, we'll leave it, you know, move around it. Nobody wants to take down a healthy tree. I get that. But if this were to go to the Architectural Access Board in a complaint and/or somebody were to file a lawsuit, we would lose. So that's, my goal is to tell you that, to not waste the town's money, not waste the taxpayers' money. We would, you know, be susceptible, according to the AAB, I've given them all the facts, that, um, to, you know, upwards to $1,000 a day. So I mean, that would be, my recommendation would be for those reasons alone to take the tree down, but that would. I've got the site from 521 CMR, if anybody wants to look them up, definitions. It's considered a facility, walkways are in the definitions listed under sidewalks and walkways under a facility. And that's where all the requirements and the thresholds are there for when you have to replace them, so.
So, uh, Tony, I'm, I'm, I'll be honest with you. And I've had correspondence with Jack, and I've had correspondence with Diana. And, and I'm, I'm leaning towards we might have to take this tree down. But I, I do want to see other options, like in terms of compensation, like, like what we would do if, if their property's being damaged and we can keep a healthy tree.
Well, the only problem with that, Rob, is in order to fix the wall and or the thing, you'd have to shave the roots down and damage the tree. So then that's going to make the tree even less healthy and more at risk for it to, you know, decay and potentially fall over. That's what I've been told by, you know, an arborist will tell you that. So if you have to damage the root system to make repairs to the wall and or fix the staircase, you're going to, you know, damage the tree.
I'm, I'm aware of that. I used to work for a tree company. I actually had a pesticide license at one point. You know what? I'm, I'm sorry. I'm gonna, I know, I know the Delwee So said that, um, you know, they've waited 408 days. I'm going to ask them to wait 422. I'm going to table this. Um, I want to take a look at other options. Okay? If that's okay?
No, it's not up to me. You have a privilege. You have a council privilege to put this over till the next meeting. Council privilege is approved. Uh, this will go to the next meeting. We will ask to have sufficient information before. I would ask councilors to reach out to, um, to the Town Manager to have questions that we will be able to have answered that day. And we will hopefully come to a decision on this at the August 2nd meeting.
I'll leave me, I'll leave you talking.
Talk about this now.
Yeah, um.
It's table. He has a council privilege, it's new business. That ends discussion. He could have waited till the end of discussion to make his motion, but he did not. I was hoping we'd get some discussion. Town Council review and sign a letter to the MBTA regarding Better Bus Network, Consul, uh, um, Consul Belcher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so the motion reads, I move that the Town Council accept and assign the attached letter regarding the MBTA's Better Bus Network proposed redesign and request that the council clerk to send the recipients indicated in the letter and below or take any action relative thereto. So a brief synopsis of this is that the MBTA has redesigned their bus network, and it greatly disadvantages Wentworth, specifically Point Shirley. It cuts out service beyond DeParnas. So we've written a letter, it touches on a few aspects of the network redesign that are a big problem for Wentworth. Notably, like I mentioned, the Point Shirley service, as well as a diminished level of service proposed. Currently, we have the two bus routes, the 712 and 713, and we're asking that they be retained in their entirety. And that we're presented an opportunity for a greater level of service than currently exists. One thing mentioned in this part of the letter is that the Governor's Park bus stop is removed. That's a highly traffic bus stop in town. So we're asking that remain operational. And we do note that the new proposal does link Wentworth to Beauchmont through the new network, which is great, but at a cost that is too much for the benefit there. Also in the letter, we touch on other things that we wanted to talk to the MBTA about. Financial support for the ferry, as well as increased focus on the Blue to Red Line connector. We've requested that a representative of the MBTA come before the council to discuss the content of this letter, as well as the next steps.
So there is a motion by Consul Belcher to send this letter on behalf of the council. Is there a second on the motion? Second by Consul, uh, everyone. Second by Consul Munson. Any further discussion on this? Consul Flakat?
Um, I, I'm in agreement with your general thesis here. I have several problems with your letter. As an editor. I think the first few quest, uh, sentences are confusing. I don't think you clear your point there. And I have several suggestions. I also think the reference to a transit system that was abandoned 80 years ago helps your cause. It's very dear to the hearts of people in Wentworth, but it is no, has no relevance to the people who are in power right now. And it will have anything to do with this. And after all, it was abandoned because people weren't using it.
Any, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I thought.
Could we get together and edit this letter?
Sure. The, the only thing is this is getting fairly time-sensitive. I was hoping to be able to.
Do it.
Yeah, because we want to get it out there because this is approaching the MBTA's, MBTA is holding meetings about this, but they're getting to.
We could approve it based on amendment, based on clarification and grammatical corrections.
All right, then in the third sentence, where you say Wentworth to do this simply to access transit options, insert the word "when" instead of "that" currently. Options that currently, um, you know.
Exist, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's not going to work. And take out the phrase "in the best circumstances." It just shortens it and helps it.
And, and excuse me, I'm not saying you have to make the corrections now. I'm saying we could approve this based on.
Okay, that would be great.
Yes, and, and give you guys the flexibility to change the verbiage.
Yeah, I would, I would like you to add a section to about us having only two workways in and out and our desire to minimize car traffic by using public transportation. So let's get together.
So there's a motion to approve sending this letter, and it's been seconded. And it will be discussed between, the amendments made, the verbiage changes made would be acceptable to the council. Any further discussion on the letter? Kyle, Vice President Ruggiero.
I, first of all, want to thank, um, Consul Belcher for her leadership on this. This is an issue that, um, is going to affect not only the folks at Point Shirley, but the town in general. And this is one of those issues where, um, you know, I think we as a council really need to kind of take a strong stance on. The MBTA operates here in town, as we know. And as this letter references, um, in addition to the traffic impacts and the diminished level of bus service, and of course, the, the cutoff completely of Point Shirley from bus service and, and Deer Island, there, there won't be a stop at Deer Island anymore if the MBTA gets their way. So, um, you know, I think this is a great start by submitting this letter to the MBTA. But this has come up before at our council meetings. I, I would really hope that the MBTA takes us up on the opportunity to, to come to one of our meetings and discuss. I think they owe us that, especially after some of the very disturbing and disappointing, um, events that have taken place on and around public buses in town over the past few years. So, um, thank you again for, for putting in the work and, and, you know, leading this charge. But I would also like to see this maybe submitted to the newspaper in its totality once it's been edited because this is something that, um, the public also needs to get involved with. I know the MBTA is having a bunch of, um, public hearings on this. And I think that the community really kind of needs to activate and, uh, and advocate here. So this is a great starting point, and I think, uh, this is something that the council should be, um, supportive of, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? See, uh, Consul Ayala?
Just want to reemphasize terrific leadership on this, so thank you, Consul.
Totally agree. Any other discussion? Seeing then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I always know the ayes have it. Fee increase, Town Clerk. Um, this is coming out of the Town Clerk's office and the, um, the yearly street listing books, um, that are currently sold, I think, for $15. They're, they're being requested to go to 25, and that's because the cost of them have gone up to the same price pretty much. There's backup in here. I would be referring this to finance. Discussion on ARPA funding. I will go to Town Manager Marino.
Yeah, I just, I sent out the Excel spreadsheet that Robbie provided with the ARPA money. You know, was asked to give a breakdown on what we've spent so far and then the remaining funds. Um, just pulling it up right now, sorry, I apologize. Um, so we've got, uh, so our total allocation for Wentworth is $5,542,929. We've received half of that so far, $2,771,464.15. We expect, we just got an email the other day with some questions we had to answer and send in. So we should get that second payment late July, early August, um, for 2022 here. So there's a list of projects that I sent out to the councilors. A Lewis Lake Drainage Project, Sewer Project, $447,650. Leadline Road Resurfacing, a water project, $400,000. Leadline Sidewalk Replacement, another water project, $200,000. Bartlett Road Water Main Improvement, uh, water project, $1.6 million. Additional Services to the Health Department, $500,000. School Transfer for Teachers and Additional Support Staff, $400,000. General Fund Health Insurance, FY22 Revenue Replacement, $450,000. Again, General Fund Health Insurance, FY23 Revenue Replacement, in this year's budget, $450,000. And then Powers and Sullivan for the lost revenue calculation that they did for us, $6,000. So so far, total committed is $4,453,650. Remaining to be committed or remaining to be expended is, uh, $1,089,279.
And just for clarification too, before we go further, um, I know Consul Ayala had asked for the ARPA and the Cares. And the reason why the ARPA was the only one on the agenda is when we were doing the agenda, I think the Town Manager and the Assistant CFO didn't think they'd have enough time to complete the Cares.
Which we did.
We do have the Cares, but we'll discuss the Cares in more depth at the next meeting.
Yeah. And I want to be clear, the Cares is already done and audited and wrapped up. So I mean, certainly go over what we spent, but those funds aren't available. We did leave some money on the table, but I mean, as you saw in the report, but, uh, yeah, those, that's already been audited as of last December. So that, that, that Cares money is wrapped up.
And before I open it up for questions, I will say, so there is some money left to be allocated.
Yes.
The rules have slightly come down as we come out of this situation. So there might be more opportunities for different projects. But, um, I thank the Town Manager for doing that, but I would open it up for any questions on the council in regards to this. Consul Ayala?
Just for clarification, um, it says of the $1,055,000, that $589 is underway. So that looks like it's committed, and what we really have to make a decision on is the last $465,972. Am I reading that correctly?
Where we, which line item, sir?
Far right.
The 1.6 of the Bartlett Road or the additional health services? Those are the only two that are committed, not yet expended, so.
The additional, I think.
It says, it says committed, not yet expended, right?
Yep, we've already committed it, so we've spent, um, spent to date $1,005,528.97, yet to spend is the.
Not going that way. I'm coming down, trying to figure out how much money has not yet been committed that, that town needs to make decisions about. And, um.
$1,055,000, $443.03.
The headline says down at the bottom, but if you look up, uh, the first $589,000 tranche looks like it's a continuation of the Bartlett Road project.
It just hasn't been all paid yet.
It just hasn't been spent yet.
Correct. The cost of the project is committed.
It's committed.
Yeah.
And then the $465,000, that's committed as well to.
To the Health Department.
Health Department, so.
Over three fiscal years, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, the, there is no uncommitted dollars left in ARPA. We have spent every.
No, no, on the bottom, on the far left, on the bottom. The other number, um, on the left.
1089.
1089, 279, yeah.
So those two are, are in accordance with that. All right, I see the way you organize it.
Yep.
I guess the thing that, um, I mean, this is fine in terms of a spreadsheet, and thank you for all of the, um, the elements. But, um, what I was wondering is, at, at one point, we knew we had about $5 million coming in, a little more than $5 million coming in. And the question is, did we ever have a plan? Did we ever say, okay, here's sort of five strategic objectives about what we want to do with the money? And therefore, this is what we then do with respect to allocation. It just, I'd be interested in sort of understanding the history of the decision-making around that because that can inform what we have left. So we get a more ro- robust discussion. I mean, a million dollars is a lot of money.
Yeah.
It could affect a lot of things. And when would you expect to have that kind of conversation with the council?
You have it, you know, the next, I will, obviously won't be here for the meeting on the second, but certainly the 16th, or maybe the first meeting in September. And I will say, I mean, I wasn't here for that discussion here, but I can tell you the discussion I had in my prior town. When this, before the final rule came down with less than some of the, you know, restrictions on it, it was really targeted to, you know, stormwater projects, water and sewer upgrades, um, you know, broadband and, you know, infrastructure, things like that. So I can tell by just looking at this list, like, that's what Wentworth did. You focused on the water projects, and we got a lot of great work done. Certainly saves the ratepayers and the taxpayers a lot of money. Um, that was probably some of the thinking behind it. And then certainly as things got loosened up with regard to, you know, stuff for the schools and, uh, health and, you know, COVID and things like that. So that's probably where that thought process was behind a lot of this. And, you know, like I said, CAS has asked for money, like, you know, those are things we'll look at moving forward. We've got a little bit of more flexibility and freedom with the remaining million dollars, so.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on this? Thank you, Town Manager, and thank you, Consul Ayala, for bringing it up. Town Council amend Town Council Rules and Procedures to Include Council Liaison on CDIRC, W Wentworth Planning Board, and Board of Appeals. So I would like to, you know, put this open for discussion for the council, and maybe you could send this to Rules and Ordinance. I would like to adjust the agenda item to include, right now, we have an item, uh, School Committee Report, which is, was always meant when we, when we created the charter, there was always supposed to be a link with the schools in the town. And, um, the council president was on the school committee, and that, that would be that liaison to come back and give an update. And, um, a, a lot of people watch school committee meetings and other meetings, but our meetings tend to get more press, more publicity, um, and it was a good way to bring out items. So I'm thinking that it might be a good idea that we have a representative on, um, you know, the Diversity and Equity Committee, one on the Wentworth Planning Board and one on the Board of Appeals. We can discuss and see which ones. So this way, a councilor would be able to go to, not be a voting member, but go and, and participate, and then come back and have, you know, so a lot of these committees, the, you know, Planning Board, Board of Appeals, they get a lot of attention after the fact. People can't go to all these committees, and they can't go to all these meetings, and they don't, um, you know, participate much. And a lot of them get public notices, but it's only for a few distinct, you know, close abutting residences. This gives us the ability to say, oh, at last, at last month's or last week's Planning Board hearing, this was the main topic of conversation. It gets more, uh, people, especially with the Diversity and Equity Inclusion Committee. It, it, you know, we want to give it more oomph, we want to give it more attention, and this is a way to get more attention and get people more involved into what's going on. It's just a thought. If we were to do this, we would go to Rules and Ordinance, and they would adjust, um, the rules and procedures to include these items. And then I would ask for either a volunteer or appoint someone to be a liaison. We could do it to all three of them, one of them, two of them. It doesn't matter. It was just a thought I had to get more, um, you know, to get more community involvement and get more people aware as, as to what's going on in the town. And to give, uh, you know, a two. and to give, you know, a two-minute presentation to let people become aware, I think is a good thing. We don't have to, you know, we could discuss it now a little bit. It will be on the agenda item next week for, in August second, for new business. But food for thought. Any comments, suggestions, thoughts? Councilor Honan.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea. I think all three of these committees need more awareness in the community, and I think this is a great place to bring them, and I think they'll be better served if we have some representation here, bringing forth what they're discussing. I know people have asked me specifically about Planning Board issues or issues before the Board of Appeals, and I just don't know about them. So I think it's a great place to bring those things.
Do you have volunteering for all three? Thank you. Councilor Belcher.
Thank you. I think the spirit of this is excellent. It's a good idea to get these committees out in front of everybody at council meetings, but I think that we may be able to achieve this by having a representative of those committees come to the council rather than asking counselors to attend an additional meeting. I just think it may get a little busy on our end.
No, I could understand that. My thought is, the councils are elected to serve the public. These people are volunteers that, I mean, we're basically volunteers too, but they're volunteers that are, you know, taking time out. We can't, we can't force them to come to a meeting every meeting to give us, you know, that was my thought. But, but totally understand. And Vice President Magriio?
Yeah, I definitely agree with the sentiment of this as well. I think also, to Council Belcher's point, you know, maybe we need to have these discussions with the committees and with the committee chairs directly. I think there may be instances where, for maybe sort of, maybe some of the more technical committees that we serve on, if the chair or representative from that committee might prefer to come to the council meeting instead of having one of us casuals show up and, you know, talk about things that we didn't vote on, that we might not necessarily have the expertise on. So again, we're not going to know that unless we ask them and at least start the conversation. So I definitely think that's a really good way to kind of help the public understand how government works a little bit here in the town. You know, as Councilor Yello mentioned, we're here every other Tuesday, but not everybody else is here every other Tuesday, so it's a good way to kind of mix it up a little bit and get more eyes and ears on the other branches of our government, so.
And if we had a committee member that would willing to volunteer, or it didn't have to be the same one every, every meeting, but that, that would work also. Just trying to get more continuity of government out there and more transparency out there, and just to get people aware before they see something that's halfway done and they didn't even know it was being done. Council Munson.
Thank you, Council President. I do think that a liaison or someone representative would be great. I've tried on a lot of accounts to participate in a lot of the Planning Board, the recent C D I C R, but it is hard. We're pretty spread thin sometimes to kind of get to all of them. But I did think that one idea, in addition to having them come here, which I think also has benefits the public, is actually something that was mentioned in the recent C D I C R meeting, was to actually say, let's, if they wanted to, get a message out to the public, they could actually just write, although the chairman perhaps could just, instead of giving minutes, which sometimes becomes, you know, hard to digest, a little synopsis or a little blurb to be added to the town manager's blog, which I believe Town Manager Marino already volunteered to do that for C D I C R, and it becomes a very useful vehicle for a lot of people to kind of keep up on what's going on, you know, on a bunch of different facets.
Council Belcher.
Tangentially related to this, I think it's a good idea to think about what information we give committees as far as how to get information in front of the council, in front of the town manager, just best practices for their benefit and for ours. They're doing the work, and sometimes we don't see it, or they don't exactly know how to get it in front of us. Like, that was my experience on the airport committee, at least.
Tangentially, using your habit.
Yeah.
We will keep this on the agenda. I think it's a good idea. It seems to be getting positive feedback, and we will make some decisions on this at our next council meeting. Council vote to name the corner of Shirley Street and Veterans Road after Dave Green and Ramona Cooper. At the tree ceremony, I was speaking to a neighbor who was still very emotional about the incident, and deservedly so, and had asked me, can we change the names of the streets? And I said, no, I, you know, you could do anything, I guess, but I think that would be very difficult. I said, but, maybe we could name the corner. So I did, there's been some thought, and I, to make sure it wasn't already named. So I did do some research, went onto the Winthrop Memorials website, and to my knowledge, it's not been named. There's a corner on Beach and Shirley, I think, that's named, but not on Shirley and Veterans. So I think it would be, I think personally, it's a good idea, and I'd like to move this to the Memorials Committee. I'd ask for a motion to do that.
Can I?
You could make a motion and then have a discussion.
I, you know, I know everything has to go through the Memorials Committee in something like this, but I, as a, as a town council, I think we should vote on this now, because I don't think anybody has any question whether this should be named after Ramona and David Green. And I think we should move it on to the, respectfully move it on to the committee, but do it with a positive recommendation from the town council, if we can do it that way.
We do have to move it on to, on to the committee, so I would ask for a motion to do that, and then I would ask for a motion for positive recommendation to the committee. There's a motion by Council Flokard, second by Councilor Yello, no?
I got the other question.
No, no, that was the second.
Oh, you were second.
Second.
Okay, second by Council Fisillo. Discussion on the motion. Vice President Magriio?
Does the motion descend to the Memorials Committee?
The motion is going to be to send it to the Memorials Committee, and I would ask for a positive recommendation with that motion, if so.
Yeah, no, and I, I would just request that the Memorials Committee reach out to the families.
To the families, and that was, yes.
That's a good point, that's a good point.
No, because that's been brought up before in other really nice thoughts that have been done. And so, yeah, that would be a requirement of this.
Sure.
And that's another reason why we don't want to just jump at it.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I think the sentiment obviously is there. You got, Councilor Yello?
So I don't know if this is the, the role of that committee, but my observation is that it's a pretty wide intersection and not the most gussied-up intersection we get out there, and yet we're going to name it for two people that we love in many, many, many ways who died tragically. It would seem to me that we ought to, as a town, develop an urban design plan. I know there's a tree commit, a committee trying to raise money for more trees on both sides of the intersection, running up and down the street, but there's a lot of utility poles and other stuff clocking around, and maybe over the long term, doesn't have to happen, we could move towards a intersection that has nice lighting and other things, and really sort of celebrates their lives in many, many ways, as opposed to just putting up a plaque and saying, job is done. So I don't know where that kind of urban design sort of planning happens that we could then adopt, and then it gets pushed over to the capital plan. Steve tries to find when he's doing a sidewalk, maybe he adds one thing. Maybe when we're doing a street repaving, a utility thing, we can add another element. But at least we all know we're moving in a direction to eventually have that intersection really call out in the way we would like it to.
Yep, and I think we're in a stage in the town, especially at that intersection, where you might see multiple changes over the next several years, and, you know, enhancements would be nice.
It would be great that they don't get lost in all this, and it's...
President Demakov?
Yeah, would that be something maybe to bring, bring to the beautification committee?
To bring what?
To the town beautification committee.
To ask for a plan, or?
No, not, not to a plan, but I mean, at least to keep, you know, that, that section clean, looking good.
I think we want to keep every section clean and looking good. I understand the sentiment.
You know what I'm saying, you know what I'm saying, yeah.
But, you know, I, I'm sure the town, and, and we're getting off track, but I did, you know, driving through the other day, there's a lot of comments out there about all kinds of stuff happening, but I, I love this town, and it, and it looked damn nice when I drove around the other day. There were issues all over the place in, in every town and city you go in, but I think we have a lot to be proud of here, and I, and I'm proud to be here. But we're going to stay on this motion right now, and that's to, Councilor Fusillo.
I was going to ask if I could make a motion for a positive recommendation.
Yes, okay. We'll second that, so there's an amendment to make a motion of positive recommendation to go to the Memorials Committee. Any discussion on that amendment? Seeing then, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the amendment's been made. So there's a motion on the table to, with a recommendation of naming the intersection of Shirley and Veterans after David Green and Ramona Cooper, again, asking the Memorials Committee to be very cognizant of the family and to reach out to the family, but it's just with positive recommendation. Any further discussion? Council Belcher.
I just want to ask, would it make more sense to send the motion asking them to name an intersection after them? Because maybe they want one, but that right there might be a little...
No, because I think, no. It's sending it back and forth, we're not, you know, you'd have to look at what intersections are named, not named. I think, you know, I think this is, you know, this is a memorial in certain, in certain points. It's to remember a tragedy that happened, and, you know, that's my thought, that's my motion.
Could I point out something?
Yes.
That street, it's, it's appropriate because that street is flagged.
It is all flagged, Veterans Road.
It's all flagged, so that would be very appropriate.
And being a vet, both of them being veterans on Veterans Road is very appropriate also.
I should just...
Can I move the question? Do I have a motion to move the question? To move the motion to a vote? Motion. Motion to move the question to a vote, second.
Second.
Second. All those in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
I know, and he knows, the ayes have it. Thank you, the motion is passed. Update on Charter Ordinance and Review Procedures. So, and I'll let Vice President Magriio speak on this too, as to what they might be doing and when they might be coming back, but I just got some updated information as to how this will proceed going forward. The Charter Review Committee has met, as Vice President could speak for, and has attended just about all those meetings, except for a brief trip abroad.
Doing research.
Yeah, doing research, yes.
Family, familial.
But, you know, over the next month, they will be coming back to us with recommendation or an ordinance, updates, adjustments, and potential charter changes and suggestions. I did reach out to K P just to get, to make sure, whatever we're doing, we're doing it right. I've also had conversation with former Council President Tom Riley, who is just a wealth of knowledge when it comes to this stuff. So just to update as to how the procedure will work, the, the committee will come back to us with recommendations. We will discuss the recommendations. We'll have hearings on the recommendations. We will vote on the recommendations. Any recommendation that is approved with a positive recommendation would require a two-thirds vote of the council. Any amendment to the council that is passed will be voted on by the citizens before it is enacted. The vote by the citizens would be at a regular town election, so potentially, probably. Any vote on any changes would be on the November twenty-twenty-three ballot. Any changes that would be passed would take place after, if they were, for example, if there was changes to composition of the council, or terms, or length of terms, or anything like that, it wouldn't take place until the November twenty-twenty-five election. Any substantive change would go before it went to the town. It would be approved by the council, it would go to the state legislature for a home rule petition. Granted, it would then come back and then would require a vote by the town. So the citizens would be voting on any change. Anything substantive would have to go to the state legislature first for a home rule petition. So for example, if there's verbiage changes into the dates and times of budget being submitted to the council, that's a non-substantive change. It would have to be voted on, two-thirds of the council, and then still approved by the citizens. If it's a substantive change, as that we're going to change the number of councilors from nine to twenty-one, that's a substantive change. It would have to be passed here, it would have to go to the state legislature for a home rule petition, and then it would still have to be passed by the citizens. So I just wanted to give an update on that, and I'll give Vice President Magriio a chance if he wants to just update us on to the, as to the process and where they are right now.
Yep, so, thank you, Council President. So this committee has been meeting since...
March first.
Yeah, March first, so quite some time. So we've, and, and it's been pretty much every Wednesday night for multiple hours since March first. So I just want to say, a lot of time and effort and discussion has gone into this. Right now, the, this past Wednesday, the committee held an official public hearing on six proposals. Nothing finalized just yet, but just sort of some, some big picture topics to get the public and the committee itself kind of thinking a little bit more critically as to, you know, some of the changes that we may want to see to both the charter, to our ordinances, and a few things in between. I think what Council President Lettieri had described was the method for changing the charter itself, but this committee also may be recommending some ordinance changes, which I believe that we can just take up as a council and not necessarily have to go through that entire...
Right, there might be more of a suggestion that we could move to.
So that public hearing lasted about four hours, so there was, there was healthy discussion there, I would say. But I think the next step for this committee is to hopefully wrap things up, fingers crossed, knock on wood, tomorrow evening, so that a recommendation will be made to the council. I think, you know, from, from hearing what the chair, Mark Chapdeline, has been talking about, it's going to be more of a, of a substantive report as opposed to a bullet point of six things. I think there's, it's going to be really something we can sink our teeth into, but obviously, that's, you know, we had that four-hour public hearing last week, but that's not where the public input ends. I think that's where the public input may start in a lot of ways, as we debate it here, and eventually, if, if things make it forth to the ballot. But I also sit on that committee with our clerk Denise Quist and Karen Chavez, who's in the audience, and a handful of other folks, so. Is that a good...
Is that meeting tomorrow evening?
Yeah, I thought that was great, Steve.
And also, Vice President Magriio just brought up something that, any recommendations that come back? I did ask K P if, for example, you know, whatever crazy example I could use, if, if they wanted to raise the number of councilors to twenty-one, and we, we thought it was a good idea, but to amend it to eleven. We could make amendments to any suggestions as a council, as long as any amendment, again, is a two-thirds majority. But we can make amendments to recommendations from the ordinance review.
And I think it's actually good timing, this proposal and some of the things that we may see come out of this committee, coupled with the, the motion that we had just discussed in having council liaisons. I think just the workflow of the council is something that we want to consider, you know, and it's kind of a really good time to be looking into these things and talking about them, so.
All right. Public comment. We will go, first, we'll go in the room, Diana, please.
So I know we've tabled...
Diana's precinct two.
Precinct two, thank you. I know we've tabled the tree discussion. I will say, I want to thank the experts that did show up to speak on behalf of this tree and reiterate what we have been saying for eighteen months as well, on behalf of the public, not in our personal interest. So we have a certified arborist in the room, we have one who called in today, we have the current tree warden here today, we have the former tree warden here today, we have contacted K P law supposedly for eighteen months, and no word about having violated it in any form or fashion, yet suddenly we have a suggestion that we'll be fined a thousand dollars per day for something or other. I'm not really sure. I don't get it. I haven't seen anything. There's been a consistent denial of, of access to, for, for the public for information about this, including the three arborists reports, which we filed a Freedom of Information Act request for, and that deadline has passed. We never got that. We never got a damage report of the retaining curb, which was, it is a curb. We have seen the slight elevation. Understand this is a pain point for... Understand this is a pain point for, for the adjacent homeowner, it is a pain point for us. I want to be home giving my kid a bath, I am missing bedtime, I miss dinnertime, I don't want to do this anymore. I don't want to have, like, our entire town distracted and muddle about this, it's over, we're want, we're wanting to follow the law. So we put this tree ordinance in place to make sure that our trees are protected going forward, and we'd like our state laws and the sentiment around our state laws to be followed now. So we'd like to keep our tree, if you walk down that street, you'll see that this is a remaining mature tree, and we'd like to keep them one, and we'd like to keep those going forward, and that is why we put the ordinance in place. And I think that, you know, Councilor Ayalo hit the nail on the head, like you just do your job, follow the law, we don't want to do this anymore. It's wasted an enormous amount of time and effort, and it's, and it's, it's a done issue, okay? Accessibility, we've, we've already discussed this. Yes, there is an adjacent walkway on the other side of the street, yes, there is no ongoing sidewalk construction going on on that street, potentially, according to our, the head of our TPW, it could cost a lot of money to put up that, we don't need one, because there's no violation, and there's no handicap person saying that they're having a problem, but even if there was, there isn't a violation. I don't want to do this anymore, I want to go home, I'm actually leaving after this comment, thank you guys for coming, thank you for coming. Thank you all for bringing it up, but, like, let's just be done, thank you.
Any other public comment in the room, Mr. Schmidt?
So, Bill Schmidt, precinct five, also Chair of the Board of Health, I have two issues. I want to applaud Council, um, Belcher on the work on the MBTA. Joe, you might, Council Ayalo, you might know this, there used to be an MBTA advisory board, I thought, which consisted of representatives from each community. Is that still in place? Does Winter have a representative? I don't know that question.
It's still in place, and I believe Winter can appoint someone, um, but you would know the history of this better than I do.
Yeah, but I don't know if we have a representative as of now, or if we do, who it is, but we can get that information, and if we have the ability to appoint someone, that would be fantastic.
I'm the head of the advisory board, so I can ask him if we've got an active member of...
That's easy enough.
Uh, second point, um, Chair of the Board of Health, last December, we passed trash regulation, uh, dealing with solid waste recycling sector. We had a lot of consultation with Wendy M. Page, uh, Council Cal, uh, interim, um, Town Manager Delante at that point. So if you're thinking about making some changes to how trash operates, we want to make sure that our regulations, um, conform to the same thing, so there's gonna be some discussion about changes, we'd like to be part of that.
There'd be, the, no proposal to changing the way, I mean, everything would have to be in a barrel, have to be covered, blah, blah, blah.
Right now, we have the three, it's limited to three houses, three, um, three, if you gotta change to four, that would be a change.
Well, well, um, that meeting will be, the joint committee meeting will make sure, obviously, as every town meeting is posted publicly, so I think that'd be a good time to have these discussions, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Let me wake up. Concerning the bus that goes down to the point, um, the town gives money to the, uh, Transit Authority. Will there be a reduction for the money that, you know, we're losing a service, so should we get money taken off of our bill?
I think, Curletta, can I answer this? Curletta, when it's, when it's released, picks on this exactly right, it's paid by population, independent of the level of service. So if you would look at Hingham as an example, they get commuter rail, they get MBTA ferry, they get bus, et cetera. For the same rate per person that we get a bus, that they're now trying to take a fifth away from us, as well as other stations, and we don't have an MBTA ferry, and we don't have commuter rail, right? So we're already on the short end of the stick, and they're giving it to us even more.
So, so no money?
No money coming back, the only thing you can argue about is service, and trying to get more service.
And hopefully, we will be on the MBTA ferry. Any other comment in, uh, yes, Karen?
Uh, Karen Travis, precinct two, um, I just want to thank the Town Manager for getting back to me on my two issues, and I think everybody at the table knows what they are, the ferry and the public safety building. Also, I'd like to ask the Town Manager if he would mind, please, to send either me or Matt Gorowitz that spreadsheet you have on the upper...
Oh, sure, absolutely.
What money's located out?
Yep.
Thank you.
I do have an update too, uh, since the email Karen has asked about payments from Quincy and whatnot for the ferry. Uh, since I sent you that email, we actually got the second payment in for FY twenty-one, so we received the full hundred and twenty thousand for last year, and we've sent the invoice for this year, so I just want to update that, that came in just two days ago, on Monday, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, I do have a quick comment.
Just name in precinct Phil Ronan.
Oh, I'm sorry, Phil Ronan, precinct three, um, I do have a quick comment, though. I'm just wondering, um, about the reduction in the bus line, I didn't come here for that, and obviously, I feel like, sure, I'd like to go home myself, but the young lady that just left, but, um, I kind of look at it a different way. Could this be, and Joe, having been served on the board of the MBTA for many years and done a fine job, I'm wondering if it might be a preemptive strike by them to see if they've taken apart of the town away, and then, you know what, if there's not a public outcry by all of us, we'll try to take the rest of it away, which I know there was some talk years ago of something like that, that's what I'd be very fearful of, so, I don't know if you have a comment on that, or...
Council Belcher?
Um, just to touch on that, I think that's a, a valid fear, but I think that this was more based on the fact that they used big data and cellphone data to do the network redesign, so because our ridership is lower than a lot of other communities, just because we're smaller, and Point Shirley is especially smaller than the rest of the town, I think that that was probably the basis for cutting off that service. But that's a really valid point, I appreciate that, thank you.
Senator Ayalo?
Squeaky wheel gets the grease, which is what you're saying, is absolutely true.
Yeah, you know, it, I think it's an insidious, not to be a, a theorist of conspiracies, but I, I just, it wouldn't surprise me with the way things are going. You know, and they're hemorrhaging money, and they're suffering from poor press and everything else, and... We're a small little town, peninsula, you know, we don't speak out, we get victimized, you know?
Okay.
Thirty more seconds, Mr. Chan, I, I have a...
Okay, closing.
It was mentioned about, um, the playground parking situation, that was the only meeting I missed this month, so I, I don't know, I'm not up to date on, uh, what was spoken about, that was a joke. I think there's a state law that says you cannot back out into an interstate roadway, which is happening, uh, here right now. This was taken up fifteen years ago by myself, uh, and the police chief, Goldstein, at the time. The issue wasn't resolved, but the issue is that it's dangerous to back out of an empty parking situation on an interstate highway, especially near a playground, you know, hide and seek, you know, whatever the case may be. So, uh, I informed the group that was on, uh, the meeting last week, or whatever it was, and they didn't know anything about it. So I'd like, uh, people to be informed about laws that are on the books concerning backing out on an interstate, uh, roadway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom?
Yes.
Yeah, they were on Zoom. Oh, excuse me. I'm going back to sleep.
Mike?
Again, uh, thank you again for your time, um, Mike DeLusso, precinct five, against East Olly as a resident homeowner. First and foremost, um, Council DiMarco, I, I, I will always appreciate the fact that any board committee wants to have time to read the facts and if I have to wait today for those one or two, I can respect that decision, um, as was previously expressed by someone else, and, and time, this is one of the frustrating, and I guess I'll have to use, uh, five vacations, the full vacation is better at this point, but, um, I would thank the council and the Town Manager, because of the first time since this process began, if there are concerns, truly been heard, especially those concerning, um, both the laws that are on the books and the legal precedent established by case law and common law. I would just like to ask the Council Presidents, um, since this will go through, since the Town Manager is not going to be here, and this is brought up again at the August second meeting, um, if you could just please make sure that this information be obtained, and, and check the last board regarding the legal standard, because that may be a little difficult for the council before that meeting, so that is, uh, be resolved at that meeting, hopefully, it cannot be postponed to the second meeting in August, thank you, I would appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Mike. Anybody else on Zoom?
Lucy, DeLusso.
I just want to say thank you, everybody, for taking their time to meet with us, I do feel, I want to reiterate what Mike said, I do feel like we have been heard tonight unlike in previous meetings, um, as Ms. Bean said, as she, before she left, this is taking time away from her kids, this is taking time away from my kids too, and I would like to point out that she doesn't even live in our precinct, and this tree doesn't affect her every day like it does our neighbors. Nobody who has written an objection, as far as I'm aware, via public information requests that I file, who has filed an objection to the street even lives on our street. So why should these people have it say, in something that doesn't affect them every day like it does our neighbors? I know our neighbors have sent in emails of support for, um, removal of the tree, I know they've all, I've given them all copies of these tree reports that state this tree could fall on our house. Again, as a liability insurance adjuster, I want to reiterate unto the town that if this tree falls on my house, or if this tree hurts somebody, or this tree injures somebody, and you are aware of that because of these reports, and you do nothing, the town could, will most likely be held legally liable for those damages, thank you.
Thank you. Denise?
That is it.
Okay, moving on to, uh, public relations and upcoming events, I will say that the Winter Public Health Department is sponsoring a free college preparation sessions to all Winter High Schoolers, two to four drop-in hours starting July twenty-first, and continuing weekly on the following Thursdays. Council Honan, anything? Council Fucillo?
Yeah, really quick, I just want to, in light of events, um, past weeks, I, I would like to just let everyone know, if, if anyone is struggling in terms of anxiety, depression, or any other thing, please reach out to, uh, receive help. There is help available, um, there's resources within the town, I know that, um, so just please do that, thank you.
Council Manza?
Uh, yes, I, I wanted to, um, mention that the Odd Fellows is having a blood drive, um, both on July thirtieth and August thirty-first. There are still openings to be had there, it doesn't get any more convenient than giving blood in your own town. Parking's free, it's very easy, um, it's air-conditioned inside the, uh, the lodge. I also just wanted to make a, uh, a comment on how I feel as though Winthrop is moving forward, and I just see all the progress that's being made, the appointments that are being made, the, the democratic process, and whether, even this contentious issue with the tree removal, it's a democratic process, and we're doing well, and it is a beautiful town, and I can't help but love it too. So I just wanted to say those positive comments, and say thanks to everyone in all facets, let's keep moving forward.
Council Belcher?
Uh, again, just about the bus network, you can email the Better Bus Pro, not the, just Better Bus Project at MBTA.com to submit your opposition, you can also look at the proposed maps and map out routes compared to the current routes and what they're proposing, so please check that out, it is a big, big change, not just for Point Shirley, but for the rest of the town as well.
Thank you, Council DiMarco.
I just want to echo, uh, Council Fucillo's, uh, comments, other than that, I guess.
Council Ayalo?
Uh, in the park this Saturday, Crest Avenue Park, so always a good time.
Can you repeat that, Council?
There's no hour then.
Council Flokhat?
Uh, I would just like to mention that W B Z is having an ice cream contest that, uh, different organizations, uh, may get free ice cream. And I would like to recommend that you all, you know, log on to W B Z's website and recommend WinARC, our, uh, uh, organization for disabled children, and I, I think it would be wonderful if we could bring ice cream to town for them. So it, it's going to be a popularity contest, so we have to have lots of people log in.
Vote early and often.
Yes.
Vice President Magriio?
Um, I want to echo both of the sentiments from the counselors prior to me, but, um, especially Art in the Park on Saturday. I think that's a great opportunity to go visit a local business, um, see some friends, and sit in the park a little and have, uh, breakfast. And I'm also being told that there's a resume, um, review, information workshop every Wednesday from two to four, starting July twentieth at the E.B. Newton School on the first floor, is what I'm being told.
Yes, sir.
Resume review?
Resume review.
Resume.
Council DiMarco will be, uh, due...
I, I can help with that, I know I can, that's what I do for a living, so, I mean, I was surprised to hear that, I didn't know that.
I know we would love further discussion, but do I see a motion for adjourn? Motion by Council Fucillo, second by Council DiMarco, all those in favor say aye. I always know, the ayes have it, meeting adjourned.